Are you coming up? Are you going to join us at the table?
Yeah.
All right.
Not quite retired yet.
Yeah. Well, thank you very much for joining us tonight. And I apologize that we're getting a bit of a late start. As you could tell, we had a lot of questions for our students on their report, and I'm sure we'll have many for you as well. So who would like to get started? If you'd introduce yourselves and provide your report. And we do have it in front of us, but we would love to hear your summary and have you go through it. That would be great. Thank you so much.
Thank you for having us this evening. My name is Anne Marie Swope. I am a parent appointee to APAC. I was also nominated as the chair for this year.
Hi, I'm Jackie Green. I'm an advanced academic resource teacher in Fairfax County at Braddock Elementary School, and I am the co-chair along with Anne Marie. And we're very excited to be here. And we are very appreciative of the time that you're going to allow us. Before we get started, we do want to say a very special thank you to Dr. Carol Horn, who is retiring this summer. And just to let her know and everyone know that her legacy and impact will live on forever and that the amazing progress and growth that we've experienced for all students is largely due to Carol. So thank you.
Fed, and we absolutely agree. Who would like to start?
I'll start.
Go right ahead.
I'll run to the charge. Our charge for this year is to study and review the current school-based services and make recommendations for strengthening advanced academic services in every elementary school and to ensure that all students are able to achieve their full potential. Our approach in making recommendations this year, we focused on, for the first half of the year, to really focus on doing a deep dive, a lot of research, to really get a core understanding of the AAP services, the strategy, and the program, and the approach, not only at the county level, but also at the local school level. With that said, we had multiple presentations and even a panel, as you had seen with the multiple appendices. We did have a presentation on the role of the AART, the Advanced Academic Resource Teacher. We also had a presentation on the Young Scholars Model. And we also reviewed and discussed the local plan for education of the gifted and best practices in gifted programming. In addition, we also had a panel, a robust panel, I might say, with principals and full-time and part-time ARTs from a diverse pool of elementary schools within the county. By diverse, I mean we had some that were Title I, some that were not. And those elementary schools included Armstrong Elementary, Belvedere, Braddock, Buzz Aldrin, Glen Forest, and Mason Crest. After that amount of research and what we did, we spent the last two months in coming up with our recommendations. And with that, we have four. First recommendation.
Okay, so our first recommendation is that we want to strengthen equity of access for all students to AAP curriculum and services. Although we know that it benefits our AAP students, we also know that the strength of our curriculum serves special ed, ESOL, twice-exceptional students as well. So we really want to recommend that all classrooms use this rigorous and beneficial curriculum to help their students achieve higher outcomes and think more critically. And this is possible with students that are even new to the English language with appropriate scaffolds. So at my school, at Braddock, we're Title I, 70% second language. And the majority of our students are exposed to AAP curriculum. Our Level IV classes are young scholars and second-language students, and they have shown tremendous growth. So I definitely, we want to encourage that approach for all classrooms. And we also want to continue and strengthen that pipeline, not just from elementary school, but that same rigor to continue again through middle school and secondary levels as well with rigorous communication. But we can't emphasize enough that it's not just AAP. It's really best practices. And critical thinking benefits everyone. And the earlier you start, the sooner that they're going to be able to take advantage and really reach their potential.
To kind of build off the first recommendation, where we're going to strengthen the equity of access, our second recommendation is to increase the availability of professional development related to the AP curriculum and topics about how to identify and provide services for advanced learners in elementary school. At the end of the day, we want to help ensure that all students have access to higher-level thinking and feel that teachers across all elementary schools should have access to a similar level of professional development time, resources, to be able to effectively identify, nurture, and to support the full academic potential of all students. Some of the opportunities for enhancing professional development we discussed was increasing access to academy courses, increasing access to the AP institutes, and various professional learning opportunities, which can support teachers receiving the advanced academic endorsement. And we also know that the desire and the demand to receive is there at the AP office. There are wait lists for the endorsement classes each semester. So we know that there is a desire and demand. We just need to get them there. One of the professional development approaches that we had discussed, provided successful, was a combination of professional development training, followed very closely by job-embedded implementation, which allows the practitioners time to utilize this training during their daily classroom instruction. And one of the key people in making this happen is the AART. Based on their training and their focus, the AART is already at the school. This can save time and money. That is going to enable them to be the lead in the in-house collaboration in the professional training and in assisting them in basically implementing it through job-embedded training.
So our third recommendation is to, in support of Recommendations 1 and 2, would be to recommend having a full-time AART at every elementary school. The difference between a part-time versus a full-time AART is profound. And we feel it is necessary in order to close the achievement gap and support our underrepresented students, our potentially gifted young scholars. In addition, they're able to support those students more heavily with not only direct resources, but also through a coaching model and really emphasize that the AART, although is a generalist, so they can do science, math, language arts, social studies, but they can also help teachers build their efficacy and really do professional development that will increase their likelihood to use AAP resources and curriculum. But as you can see in the report, the growth in the young scholars, those, again, traditionally underrepresented students, is profound. There's been a 290% increase in students being found eligible for full-time Level IV services just over the past few years. And that is largely due to the support from the Advanced Academic Resource Teacher. So if we really want to make the impact and help our students grow, we need to have that support with specialists in that same respect.
Our last recommendation, Recommendation 4, was to look at conducting a longitudinal study to determine the impact of early AAP identification in elementary school on second and post-secondary achievement. Well, we have some data showing student performance and an achievement through test scores, graduation rates, course selection. And we also have data from studies regarding young scholars, as you saw in the appendices. What we don't have is kind of that additional, you know, taking it to the next step and really looking at the impact. For example, can we show impact on student performance and post-secondary options if the students, say, were identified it earlier in their Fairfax County school career versus not? Did they attend a Level IV school versus maybe a center? Did they have access to AP curriculum and programs throughout the vertical ladder? I learned that term today. Vertical ladder, from elementary, middle, you know, through high school. And essentially, if you look at our strategy as portrait of a graduate, are we actually preparing our students from the time they're at school to when they graduate? So if you think about that and after. So in an effort to make an informed decision regarding the benefit of the current AP, you look at the second bullet, in elementary schools, we recommended that data should be collected and analyzed across time about impact on student performance, and most importantly, their options. So not just their graduation rates. You know, are they getting into their two-year school? Are they getting into their four-year school of choice? Are they getting a job? Are they getting scholarships? You know, these are taking it to the next level. And if they chose IB or AP, did they actually finish through and see it through, or is there an attrition rate? So these are the other items in terms of not only being able to track students' progress, but it can also assist, obviously, in revising or updating AAP services, strategy, and curriculum as needed. But it also can assist in making more qualified long-term budget decisions, you know, at the end of the day.
That concludes our presentation. Excellent. Well, thank you so much. You have given us a lot to think about. I do have a school board member questions. I'm going to start with Mrs. Strauss.
Great, well, thank you very much. And again, I want to thank Carol Horn for all of your years of service. And many of us got to cheer you on at retirement some weeks ago. But I want to say thank you again because I know that you worked very hard to develop this program to where it is today, and I'm very grateful. Thank you. All right, couple of questions and comments. First, your appendices were very interesting. I particularly enjoyed rereading the Hanover Study. Thank you. I don't have to look for it and reproduce it again. There it is. It's just very informative. And a couple of comments. I have been visiting, I've visited now all the elementary schools in the Drainsville District. And some observations and recommendations that I've heard from principals is they would welcome to have all of our center programs be within Pyramid so that students progress up through the Pyramid. I know that's not possible in all cases, but they feel that that provides for much stronger support for children and families. I also have a couple of schools where nobody is moving, is where some of the large schools that are offering Local Level IV and sort of all the various options, and none of their families have decided to go to a center. So they've kept them all. This is the first year where I've really seen that. So that was very interesting. And I was pleased to hear you talk about the teaching strategies and the thinking strategies and that is, those approaches are appropriate for every child. And I thought the one we began in Fairfax County to talk about the importance of critical thinking and providing those opportunities for every single child and that what teachers learn in this kind of training is applicable to everybody. So I'm glad that you mentioned that. Now, also, I would be remiss, the message from Herndon Middle School is that they would like their center, they would like Herndon Middle School to be designated a center again for the kids to stay in Pyramid. And I know the Herndon Pyramid would very much like that. And so they've asked, they said, please, could you suggest that? They would like that because right now, they go from Clearview, which is in Herndon, to Hughes, and then back to Herndon High School. And they would like to be able to stay in Pyramid. It would probably also help with enrollment and overcrowding and all the rest of that. One question in Appendix 7, which has to do with closing the achievement gap in Young Scholars Grade II. Because again, it is important that the Young Scholars Program continues as robust and again, all of those opportunities for kids to be challenged. But can we pull up, I don't know, Eileen?
Yes, they have.
They have the link.
Okay, Appendix number 7, because I would love for you to explain it a little bit better because it shows some interesting pattern in 2017. But you probably want to take a look at it. It's Appendix 7. Can we find Appendix 7? Yes, there we go. Can you explain this one a little bit?
I probably should explain this.
Yes, thank you.
Several years ago, we realized that the Young Scholars were being identified for Level III. They weren't, and by not just Young Scholars, all underrepresented students. However, the focus has been on Black and Hispanic because of the closing achievement gap.
Right.
So we realized that we weren't finding these students with the second-grade pool, even with non-verbal. And they weren't necessarily being referred. So we asked, but they were getting Level III services. So we talked to our resource teachers, and many of them said, well, we're worried that if they go to the center, they won't scaffold for them. It was like they were being protective. So they said, you know, we're giving them services here at our local school. And we questioned that. We just said, well, we understand you're being very protective of them and you are doing a good job with them at the local school. However, you're denying them an opportunity because as long as we have Level IV, they should at least be brought to the table. So what we asked them to be more proactive in referring students, Young Scholars and other underrepresented students, have the teachers refer them. The teachers are often hesitant to start referring because then they'll think the parents would pressure on them to refer all kids. So we said, in our Title I schools, we really want you to be thoughtful. And if students typically, students who are referred typically have test scores in the 120s. So what we started doing is we started sending them lists of students who had test scores in the 120s. And we said, if they are students who are from underrepresented groups, be sure you refer them or talk to their parents and see if their parents will refer them. But at least get them to the table because that's the biggest problem. If they're never referred, they're never looked at. And as you know, the pool kind of grabs those top kids, 130 and above. So that's what's happened. So what we found is, over time, the resource teachers have become a lot more proactive. And they are either referring or they're working with the parents and the parent liaisons to have the students referred. We get some wonderful referrals from parents now of students from the Title I schools who've worked with the parent liaison and are starting to understand what this opportunity means. So we're showing here that the Young Scholar referral has gone up, you know, from, I guess, 2015. We had 110, and last year, we had 339 Young Scholars referred by teachers and parents. But that's huge because at least it gets them to the table. And then they're screened with everybody else. So they have to be competitive. But it really has made a big difference.
It appears that we are providing kids more opportunities.
Absolutely.
Right, which is important because when we talk about closing the achievement gap. And it's also closing the equity gap.
Exactly.
And making sure that there are opportunities for everyone. And we know that giftedness is an emerging quality. So this is welcome news.
Yeah, and we think so too.
Yeah, we're looking for equity. So this looks like an improvement. Thank you.
I just wanted to add one more thing to that. So just again, personally, at my school, at Braddock, of the students that we referred, we referred 66 students for Level IV. 59 of those were found, were Young Scholars, and 49 of those were found eligible. So it shows that students are capable of doing the work and that they deserve the right to also have opportunities as well. So it's definitely making, the Young Scholars Model and advocacy is making a huge difference.
Great, thank you very much. Ms. Ives?
Yes, thank you all very much. Just a few questions. The Mason Crest example, I noticed in your appendices, you have some examples of schools that are doing Local Level IV, right?
Yes.
So my understanding, I actually visited Mason Crest, and my understanding of how the principals there were doing it is that the kids were not ever self-contained as Local Level IV kids, right? That they were doing a good deal, they are doing a good deal, of flexible grouping. So really trying to meet every kid's needs. In fact, Brian Butler will say that he didn't even know who the Level IV kids are. So is, and that seemed to me, my understanding of it is that that had really good outcomes for kids. You know, that school won a DuFour Award for the way that they're collaboratively working as educators in the building. So I wonder, is that a model of Local Level IV? And again, that's a high-needs school as well. And they're having a great deal of success. Is that a best practice? Is that a model that we ought to be moving all of our Local Level IV, maybe all of our elementary schools toward? Since we're trying to expose every kid in elementary school to advanced academic curriculum? I mean, why would we not do that everywhere? I guess is what I'm asking.
I think that'd be great. Okay. That is one model, and other schools are using that model. Most of the time, they use that model when they don't have that many center-eligible students. I don't think Mason Crest has as many center-eligible students as, let's say, a Spring Hill or Chester Brook or some other places. So that is one model. Some, other schools are doing that as well, doing the flexible grouping approach. And then we have other schools with Local Level IV, such as Glen Forest, that's training all of their teachers. And I think they're doing it at Braddock as well so that the center-eligible students are clustered with a teacher that's trained. However, all the teachers at that grade level are using the resources and materials so it's not the have or have-nots. And you probably could go into those classrooms and really not know, you know, who's level eligible or not. Because the focus, our emphasis is on curriculum. That's our focus, not on who's identified. So when you have that emphasis on curriculum, what really matters is what the teachers are doing with the children and how that service is delivered. So I guess I'd be hesitant to say use this. That model works beautifully at Mason Crest and at other schools. But I see what's going on at Glen Forest works really well. I've seen what they do at Chester Brook works really well. So I feel like as long as the students are getting the services, it's, that's the focus. So that would be my hesitancy.
Yeah, no, I see that. And the focus is on curriculum. But also, from this report, the focus is on equity. I mean, that's what you're talking about, making sure it's available to everybody. So I like very much the idea of doing sort of longitudinal look at kids, you know, see what actually happens. I wonder, because before you even got to that slide, I was thinking about if we really are trying to embed AAP good stuff in every classroom in every elementary school, when we get to a point where we really feel like we have that going strong in a school, should we begin to look longitudinally at the kids who are not Level IV identified? You know, are they doing better? You know, are they more likely to challenge themselves later? That sounds like a lot of measuring. Is that possible?
I just want to talk about, we're beginning that process at my school because we are infusing the AAP curriculum in all classes. One of the most utilized math curriculum, advanced curriculum, is called Project M-Cubed and M-Squared. It's very project-based oriented, has STEAM. It's just very critical and really extends students. We decided that we would do that with every grade level, K through 5. Every student would do at least one unit. So we began to measure that data. And so far, the results coming in, again, it's just from one year, are that on that particular unit in which they used the curriculum, they did exceptionally well and better than the year before. So next year, we're adding, we did a little bit with different pieces of curriculum. But I think it's, we're beginning that process, but absolutely finding a way to measure it quantitatively and qualitatively is something I'm interested in. And I think that some of the other schools as well are starting to really try to pick apart. Because I think we're going to show results with all students, and that's what we want, and that's where we're headed. So that's a really good point.
All right, thank you. Just one last question. As you try to expand the use of this curriculum to every teacher, every building, all that sort of thing, you know, you're having success in your building. What would you say are some of the challenges and the sort of the roadblocks or pitfalls? I mean, are we asking teachers to take on yet another initiative? Is there that kind of pushback? Are there other reasons why it's, there are sticky points in doing it?
Again, I think that if you provide the reason why, the evidence how this is going to help your students provide professional development and learning for your teachers, and explain to them that yes, the student may come from a background where they don't have, you know, the same background knowledge, or they might need a little more support, but with the right scaffolds and you help them, they are more likely and more eager to use that. Once they see that their students are getting excited and they can access the curriculum, then they're more likely to use that. But it does require that you provide them with support, which is why one of our recommendations was to, you know, try to make sure that the AART could be full-time if it's possible so that they could coach teachers through this process. And I think just seeing is believing and also getting other teachers to be leaders. So once one class has found success, often they'll be the ones to share that with their team. And then there's more buy-in that way as well. So it's sort of, what is it you say, start slow to go fast? And so that's what we're doing. We're building from the ground up and getting that buy-in and excitement and seeing the results.
One quick follow-up. That also requires, though, a supportive principal, am I right?
You're so right. And so mine is very supportive and was a former AART in her former life. And so she understands the benefit of that. But yes, you're right. It really needs to go from every up and down and everywhere. You're, that's a good point.
I'd like to add to that. I know as a parent, I'm not as in agreement with the questions that are coming out, so I can't answer. But I can say, based on our experience in the Herndon Pyramid, that we have a very solid Level IV where our daughter goes. But to your point, as you can see from here, it's kind of like, first, you want to get the right people on the bus, right? You want to make sure you have the right people on there, refreshment development, have the teachers be able to empower, engage, have a resource in-house so they have somebody there than rather having to take time to go to the county or to some other things off-site or anything like that. The other thing is a changing of mindset, like you said, of the principal and the environment itself. There has to be a strong core collaborative environment. And there needs to be a strong focus in understanding that it's not just labeling the kids. It's not a label. Every child has the opportunity. But you're going to need the time and the resources to be able to identify those children. And if you have classroom sizes growing and you have less personnel, how are you going to do that? So I think there's a lot of factors that are going to come into play and continue to come into play. As a parent, from what I've seen, having been on this committee and what I see in the schools right now, we have an incredible school system, incredible teachers. We have an incredible AAP program. After seeing all of this, we have probably one of the top AAP programs in the country, I think. But again, the focus needs to be there where we're supporting this and keeping the momentum rather than taking away. Because there is great momentum in the direction that AAP is going. And it's about the services and really going to focus on the child by the individual and not by a label. So to your point, it kind of is the environment and the personnel as well.
Mrs. Corbett Sanders?
Thank you. I had the pleasure of serving on APAC for, I think, six years. So I am thrilled to see your report. And I loved the focus on equity of access because it really is opportunities and access to opportunities for all of our students that will allow us to meet the needs of each one of them. So thank you. I also want to personally thank Dr. Horn for her leadership in making our AAP program a nationally-recognized AAP program. But more importantly, also focusing on our young scholars and recognizing that we have to address the full continuum of learners in our advanced academic programs. So I think that your approach here is one that is great and is important because it recognized that there is a continuum of services being provided, and access to them is important. I actually have a couple of questions. One is you talk about the need, and I agree with it, of having an AART in each of our elementary schools. And then you went on to talk about the role of our ARTs as coaches, really instructional coaches. So how do you balance out the need? And how do you convince principals that when they are looking at investing resources? Because I know that a number of our principals actually purchase the second half of an AART.
Right.
To have a full-time AART. And it would be helpful to know, huh? They trade, yes. Yes, how many full-time ARTs are being purchased? full-time AERTs are being purchased? I hate that term, but yeah.
It's about seventy-two.
Seventy-two out of a to, so.
Out of a hundred thirty-nine schools, about seventy-two, seventy-four.
So almost fifty percent are actually um
That's over fifty percent.
Yeah, over fifty percent. And do you see a way of pulling together that model of the instructional coaches and the AERTs as being um one and the same?
So I'm also um in the instructional cohort, um, and I've taken cognitive coaching because I find that um our roles are very similar and that we're really trying to im- like impact student achievement by supporting teachers through their growth. And I think that um my hope was that, um, and I work very closely with my instructional coach, uh, we collaborate along with the reading and the math specialist. So we are all working very collaboratively, but we're on the same page. So I feel like there are some similarities in what we do, but you have more members of the team willing to go to bat um and help students and really lift up all of your students. So we are on the same page, but the, just having um someone to bounce ideas off of, to talk about reflection, to, to buil- build momentum and look at our school improvement innovation plan together. Um, at, my role is to always constantly talk about raising the rigor, inter- making sure that we're setting, um, you know, the bar high, um, and that our expectations and growth mindset are there. And then she supports that as well and we figure out ways along with the rest of our school to come together. So I've just found that going through that process personally has made me more thoughtful, um, more aware of how to build teacher um efficacy really is the word I'm looking for, really help them reflect on their practices so that they feel comfortable using the resources and materials and that they're ready to help their students as well. So I feel like the role is shifting, um, where AERTs before were very helpful and very resourceful, but not necessarily part of that coaching process. So I think not replacing, but synergizing.
And lifting everybody else up.
And we're all in this together.
Yeah, and I have to say the AERTs, they have had a lot of the same training, they've had the cognitive coaching and we've done a lot of the same training. However, I think the co- I think the coaches support a lot of the new teachers. I think they, they have a, a separate role, but I do agree that they all work together and our AERTs are a lot more of a coach now than they used to be, especially when they're four, full-time.
Additionally, I was intrigued with your uh reference to your school being both an immersion program, a Title One, or actually three, Title One immersion and a local level four. Um, that's something that I think is really important. We've heard, or at least I've been told, that that is a very difficult model and that it's being discouraged, which is to me somewhat of a shame, because I think that it's a powerful model which also attracts um people to send their kids to those schools. So can you give a little bit of insight into that?
Sure. So that's very exciting for me to talk about, um, because we looked at our program and we had a two-way immersion Spanish program and we had a local level four. But the students that um threw the instruction in the second language in the two-way immersion program were um almost uniformly being found eligible for level four. And they were having to make a choice between level four and two-way immersion. So I talked with my principal and the other leaders in our school and said, why can't we combine them? So we did. So we have the Spanish two-way immersion, level four AAP program. And that class, we just started with third grade, we didn't jump in with all the grade levels, and that class has performed the highest of all the level four classes in our school and has shown that it's been very respectful of the students and their second language. Their parents are much more likely to come in and volunteer in the classroom and their second language parents as well. Um, and we found that their ability to code-switch, to go back and forth between Spanish and English is amazing, um, and that they are able to process and think critically and it hasn't hindered their ability. Um, so we're expanding that to next year, um, where we will have a two-way immersion Spanish AAP and fourth grade. And we are still, we still have a class that's just tradition, level four, all four subjects in English. But I really love that we um understood the needs of our school, which is predominantly Hispanic and Spanish-speaking. And we said, let's embrace that, let's take that and let's go introduce all this amazing curriculum and strategies together and see what we can create. And I love it so much.
So how much time have you um spent talking to the other immersion programs about the model you're using? Because it would be really helpful um for you to uh explain what's happening in that school, because I think that it's an important model that, uh, at least in my community where we have a very large Hispanic population, um, we have a number of two-way immersion programs and we are actually losing kids from our immersion programs as they get to the upper grades, because there's a fear factor that the kids will not get the um instruction they need to be competitive in uh middle and high school.
I haven't, um, I mean, I've talked with several people from um the two-immersion program and central office and I recently wrote a letter, um, a newsletter article for Young Scholars on the program, um, so that we could share our findings and success in case others were interested in that as well. Um, I'd be happy to share that, but that was, our main motivation started with um all of those students wanting to have level four. And then they were going to abandon, they were going to, felt like they had to make a choice between rig- and so I said, I don't, we don't need to do that. So is it an extra element of um preparation and work? Sure, I co-teach in that, that class, we have to translate some of the documents, but we are doing Jacob Flatter and Caesar's English and M Cubed and we're just doing it in Spanish. And so, um, no, I'm not speaking in Spanish, but the other, when I come in. So again, code-switching, so they go in and out, she speaks in Spanish, but I found that that um collaboration um is, it's just very powerful and I really, um, you know, I would, I would definitely recommend that to other schools as a way of combining the two together.
Could you send that newsletter around to us? It'd be very helpful to read.
I don't, as the
Yeah, the Young Scholar newsletter?
It's coming, yeah, I can send mine and then when
No, no, I, I can send, I can share our newsletter. I think it's actually a blog now on our website.
I can definitely send you
I could send you the link to the blog. It's actually, we're actually publishing it now on our website as a blog.
Excellent.
So I'll send you the link if you wanna share.
Excellent. Um, and then last, I would like to echo the um comments made by Ms. Strauss about um some of the distance our kids go uh to get to middle school AAP programs. And so I don't know where we're at on the split feeders from elementary schools to middle school, but I know of a couple of them where we have kids that are on buses for fairly large, long distances to get to um their middle school AAP program. Do you have any insights as to um split feeders and what we should be doing with them?
I think that's a, a study with facilities, transportation and, you know, I think that's usually part of a boundary study. So it's something that could be studied. We did, we did look at it several years ago. So I think that's, that's something that could be studied, but it wouldn't be a... Our office just assigns uh students according to the boundaries that are already set. We don't really have much to do with changing boundaries. So that would be a boundary study, I guess.
Thank you.
Ms. Strauss?
I guess primarily, I, I have a question about um the, the nature of the sort of the charge that you all looked at and how it's, how it's done. Is, do you vet and was FCAAG a voice in the presentation of um materials? I mean, how, how did you resource sort of looking at this, the equity piece as being the charge? And does that, that, does the delivery of services, you know, I guess, and I, I forget, um, Ms. Corbett Sanders got to it, you said seventy-four AERTs. Are those, are those resources that are bought at the school level or are they built into the budget? Because my question is, is it, are, you know, are we fundamentally headed down the path with a, a report like this to say, just do it all local level four and don't have centers? I mean, that, I, I mean, I have to tell you, that's the takeaway I get a little bit, um, is that this seems to profess that we can deliver AAP services at the school level almost co-equally to what we're doing in the SARS.
Those are good questions. Uh, first of all, I'd like to say that as far as um having a level four in every school, level four started as a grassroots movement in two thousand and three with Beechtree, uh, Beechtree Elementary Principal. And um the idea was that she would get a teacher trained and get the curriculum and start with third grade. It was a very thoughtful approach. It's continued to grow as a grassroots effort with principals as instructional leaders, writing plans, hiring teachers and training the teachers and offering that same curriculum at their school. And as we said earlier, there's a lot of different models. However, um, it's working in every school. It seems to be, because we, it's grown from one to sixty now, sixty principals, um, because of the fact that they're working with their community, their community meetings.
Just, just clarifying, that's elementary and middle?
No, elementary only, up to elementary. Um, I think part of the reason it works is because students still have the choice to go to a center or to stay, because as long as they have a choice, then um it, it doesn't take away, they don't feel like they're forced to stay. And those that are doing a really good job, more and more students are staying in their community. My concern with saying, okay, we're gonna do that in every school, would be that we would lack quality of the program, um, to jump, you know, from sixty to every school doing it. I'm not so sure that we would have the same thoughtful process that we have now and that we'd have the same high-quality program, because I really feel confident that these principals made a commitment, they worked with their community, they got their teachers trained and that those students are receiving level four services at their school. So I think that would, I think that would be um uh an extraordinary leap to just suddenly say we're gonna do it. What was your other question? FCAAG, FCAAG is rep, is on our, is part of our um committee. The FCAAG rep came to our meetings. FCAAG seems very, very involved. Um, I, I will say that over the years, we've all become a lot more collaborative. Uh, it's, it's really been a pleasure working with this committee and having these chairs. I just feel like everybody's um really works well together and considers all viewpoints. But may I let Emily speak to that?
I can speak as a class.
Oh, I agree. Yeah.
So, so, so what would you say then? What, what, what is the primary, um, because this has grown as a grassroots movement?
Yeah.
Well, I, you know, pretty much everything in education is grassroots if enough parent, I mean, you know, if it's something that they want.
Right.
You know, I mean, we know parents find a way. Tell me. So the question is, what is the difference between sort of delivering this level four model into the schools and sort of at the higher level, parents desiring more rigor? You know, just, just the concept of, you know, does this not translate to parents seeking a higher degree of rigor in the curriculum, period? Level four, you know, whether it's advanced academics or not, because, you know, the, that's what I'm wondering, if it's not just a desire, you know, this is always the tension between, you know, advanced academics, really advanced academics, or desiring really to elevate the curriculum and sort of the, you know, rising tide lifts all boats.
Well, I think initially, I, I think initially when a school begins this, it's because the parents don't necessarily wanna send their children out of their school to another school. I really think it's all about community. Then what happens when we, when we start local level four, you do see that rising tide lift all ships and more and more teachers get trained and those, those um strategies and practices are used across the school. But I do think initially, the, when I, when parent, when principals invite us to come to our school to talk about local level four, more and more, it's, they say to us, our community wants this. They want, they want their kids not to have to leave the school to get level four service.
So then what, so then what ends up being the difference in the, in the school that does acquire? And, you know, of course, there's a question of, do you have, you know, the, the proper mass of students? But what, what becomes the difference between, you know, something that, you know, Dr. Lockard or, you know, now Dr. Braybrand, you know, may address with us on addressing rigor in the curriculum versus quote-unquote local level four? I mean, if, if we elevated rigor in the curriculum in the elementary, let's just, just take elementary just for, for ease of reference. Would not there be, you know, the less of a push, you think, then for a local level four? Because I'm trying to get to, how are we gonna get to the differentiation between, you know, a center, you know, eligible student that needs a differ- needs an actual differentiated curriculum? To the desire and the, and the need, you know, the, I'm not saying it's a desire that's not a need, I'm saying it's a desire and a need, um, of the parent community, the educator community, um, for and on behalf of students, raising that rigor um in, in the classroom, particularly like in the, in the maths, you know, from, from early on. With, where, what is the difference that you see, if, if any, between, you know, well, local level four is desired and, well, wait a minute, is really the desire to elevate the, the rigor?
I see two things going on. One, I see that the level four curriculum, be it delivered through local level four or through a center, is nationally researched-based curriculum designed for gifted learners that is at a very, very high level, but we're finding more and more students can reap that challenge. The desire for rigor is, is comparable and I think that the work that the instructional service is doing right now with the new learn model, they're infusing many of the things historically were just for gifted, now are becoming part of what we do for all children, concept-based instruction, um, having accelerated math in every school, um, historical analysis and interpretation through document-based questions, authentic learning, uh, project-based learning. There's, in student research, there's so much going on now, um, that's, that that rigor is, is coming to all kids. But I, but I do think that the AAP curriculum is differentiated for gifted in a different way.
Okay, so, and I'm gonna ask one last question, I beg the liberty of my colleagues, because you brought up accelerated math and, and this, this is the other um i- issue where I'm gonna bridge this, this committee report to the one that's about to um, to be presented to us. The, is the question of the gifted learning curriculum, speed equals gifted versus, oh, no, I'm doing, I'm sorry.
Don't shake your head at me!
I'm sorry. I'm telling you.
I apologize.
I'm telling you. Is that the, the suppression of um students into or sustaining in advanced academics because they quote-unquote can't keep up, when in fact, the underlying issue are comorbid, you know, special ed needs? And it's not that they're not, they don't have the capacity to learn, um, you know, you, I mean, you eloquently spoke on behalf of, you know, an English-language learning community, but the special ed community where you depress, you know, a, a student's ability because they quote-unquote can't keep up. And it's not that they can't keep up, they may have, you know, um, a processing issue, they may have an auditory issue. I mean, there's any number of issues that don't inherently speak to um their capacity to learn at an extremely high level. And so, you know, is, is the local level four, you know, taking into account um the, the special ed special education, or is there, are you having, winding up having to make the same choice as a special education parent of saying, well, you know, I, I have a dyslexic child or I have a twice-exceptional child, you know, who is not, who basically has a barrier to advanced academics, whether it's level four or in the SARS?
I, I just wanted to say, thank, thank you for sharing that. So, we definitely look at it as a big umbrella, and we look for all of those students wherever they are. At my school, every single level four classroom has at least one, if not more, students that have IEPs and a range of brilliant ideas and thoughts, but just need support. And that is something that we're very aware of. Again, we're, you know, as a Title I school, we're very glass half-full. We have to look for that potential. Our students, just in the way they approach their learning, and, and certainly speed is not one, when I look at the students and how they're working, we have students that need extra time, extra processing, and that is okay, because we know they're going to get there.
I'm going to tell you, that's a pocket of excellence issue, that, you know, on the next steps or what do I, I, I appreciate that, I know it's not happening at every school. And this is not a knock on the schools, but they're, particularly in accelerated math, which is why I glummed onto that when you said it, there are students that are identified for accelerated math, and once they get in, they're eventually weeded out, and the reason they're weeded out is speed, that they quote unquote can't keep up. It's not the ability, it's the, the pace and, and their processing pace, you know, and I've, I've always been frustrated when I see, you know, students doing a hundred math problems. Why? If you can demonstrate your capacity, does practicing a hundred times make you, you know, are you demonstrating your skill set, you know, all the more because you did it a hundred times versus if you do it forty? And, and my concern is, is that, that, that becomes a natural, you know, winnowing of students and that we're, the opportunity gap, you know, I don't ever see an opportunity gap on special ed to, to anything, and I think it's significant. I really, really do.
No, I think you've hit an important topic, and it's something, the twice-exceptional is, is a topic that we're constantly working with teachers on and offering professional development. We have a twice-exceptional course, and the way we train teachers is that, exactly what you said, it's not a hundred problems. If they, if the, if they can do five, let them do five. And when I say accelerated math, I'm not talking about speed, I'm just talking about that students are going more in-depth. Okay. So, so I know that in this, we can find pockets of everything in this county, but we have many pockets of excellence, and that's our goal and that's our message. And when we present to parents, when we work with schools, when we work with teachers, if there is a problem with a twice-exceptional student, we work with the special ed office. Mike Bloom and I work together all the time with parents if we hear about it, and we work with the schools and the teachers. So if you do hear of somebody having an issue, call us, because that's, that's our role. Our role in, in central office, one of our roles is to facilitate, work with schools to help, help them help students. So, that is a concern.
Just, Dr. Lockard, the, for, you know, the caring forward, because sometimes there's not this, this common thread sometimes between these committee reports, but what we heard last night on the, you know, the overwhelming number of resources and parents don't know where to go and how do you find, I mean, honestly, if you're dealing with a student who is an exceptional learner and learns differently, you already have so much on your plate, and then we saw the presentation that we saw last night, the question is, how do you even, you don't even know, like, you know, and so if your, your fourth grader or your fifth grader is, you know, dropped out of accelerated math because they can't keep up, there's so much else that's on that parent's plate that they're cognitively, operationally barely getting through the day likely, never mind if they have multiple children. So, that, you know, it's something that I don't have a specific next step, but this is a concern, especially a continuation of connecting the dots between some of these reports. There's some definite Hansel and Gretel popcorn trails that, look what we heard last night. Well, if you have a parent that, you know, in, it, it doesn't know how to navigate the system and, you know, hits this, and they're trying to decide, does their child go to a center, does their child go to, stay in their neighborhood school? Oh, by the way, is a child with special needs and ESOL? I, you just, you, you're stuck and you, you don't even know where to go, and nobody even knows what a regional assistant superintendent is, you know, so that, you know, that's part of why school board members get the phone calls and the emails that we do, is they like help, I don't know what to do. And so, there are so many resources, there's so many different things that they're trying to handle, and, oh, by the way, the thing that's most important to them, which is their kid getting the academic services they need, is it happening? That's when, that's when, you know, things blow up for, for a parent. So, connecting, you know, committee work to staff work to the information that parents need is a crucial linchpin, and I guess it comes down to communication of what we heard last night. I'm sorry to my colleagues, but.
Thank you. I'll take a turn here. Thank you for, for your excellent report. I think you're, you're looking at one of the most important issues we, we can deal with in, in terms of, of moving forward in AAP, so I appreciate you tackling this. I was interested, and of course, I, I love that you had Mason Crest in there and that you have Belvedere in there. The Belvedere PYP program, of course, they are also a center. So, am I hearing you say that you believe that the PYP program is an alternative form of AAP or, you know, I mean, at, at that school, it dovetails, you know, they have a center and they have PYP. So how do you see that as an example of, of what you're suggesting is a good model?
I mean, just in a nutshell, I, I don't think we're necessarily advocating every, every elementary school will become a PYP. I think some of the big ideas, mainly that it's concept-based driven, and they make the connections between disciplines, that's actually something that all, like, that we're moving towards, and it's part of the new pacing guide, is that there'll be more of that big idea concept. So we want to make-
So you're not suggesting the PYP take, take the place of?
Okay, I'm not.
Okay. Okay. I mean, it's a marvelous program.
It is. And we're going to use the best parts of it.
And it is for, and it is for every student at that school.
Yeah. And we are taking, yeah, and we're going to, and the fact that we're really going, that the instruction is going to be taken across the county through that concept base, which we've always been advocating, but now it's part of the pacing guide for everybody is pretty exciting.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it is. It, it, I, I think it's a, it's a great program. I certainly believe in that program. Going back to, to one of your recommendations, to have a full-time AARt in, in all schools, did you get any cost estimate on that or?
We actually said explore. Explore having a full-time AARt. Obviously, we know, we are mindful of budget constraints, but we also need to keep in mind that, we also don't want to mandate something, because at certain schools, it might actually be working, we don't know. So, one of the things in terms of exploring is actually going into the schools and seeing how they're functioning and seeing what they have, if they can actually, you know, make, do some of the recommendations that we have in terms of identifying children earlier, being able to, professional development in terms of the strategies. So, I think it's more of exploring it. Obviously, from a, just a macro, just looking at it, yeah, you want to have that person there, just from a common sense, it might sound good, but we don't recommend doing it, again, just, all right, everybody gets an AARt. Explore first and then take those steps towards that.
Okay. And if, if I missed it in your report, I apologize, but how many schools now have a full-time AARt? Do we have a number on that?
I believe it's seventy-one. It said there are ninety-one schools with a full-time AARt.
Kirsten, how many? No, go ahead, tell me.
It says ninety-one schools.
Have a full-time AARt?
So ninety, so ninety-one out of, out of one hundred and thirty-nine elementary schools?
Right. Now thirteen of those, the school, well, about four years ago, the school board gave us $500,000 to put a full-time AARt in Title I schools with the highest poverty. So we've kept those thirteen positions. That, that allowed us to give the thirteen schools.
Okay.
So that was thirteen. So in addition to that thirteen, then that makes like eighty-three that, the principals that are buying. And I just want to clarify, some of those principals are using Title I money, if they're a Title I school. Some of them are using instructional material, some of them are trading other positions. So it's all, how they do it, it's, they're very creative, I just want to say that, but it's not, there's not just one way that they're finding the money, they're doing it multiple ways.
Well, I guess I would say that that probably substantiates your view on this, because if principals are feeling it's important enough to trade in another position in order to, to get one, that, that suggests that, that our principals out there, ninety-one of them anyway, believe that this is, is something that's, that's, that's important for their kids. Well, thank you for, for getting me that number. I just had one question, it's kind of a big one, but the, the number increases certainly are substantial, when you look at level four going from three thousand four hundred twenty-nine in two thousand and one to fourteen, well, nearly fifteen thousand, level, level four in two thousand and sixteen, and then, of course, your, your number on the, the young scholars, that, that certainly was very significant just in two years. Could you expand on that a little bit? I, I know there's always the conversation about, you know, are there too many identified? You know, you get, you know, there, there used to be too little, are there too many? Do you feel that these are simply students who we, we always had and just weren't identified? Is, is that what's going on or is, is something else going on? Are we, are we looking at a child who is, needs advancement in just, in one very specific area? Is that how we're getting higher numbers? I mean, I believe years ago, we kind of, we, we looked at eligible children as, as children who needed advancement in just every single thing, and I think maybe we're, we're more nuanced now, is that, is that fair to say?
Well, we still have level three in every school, and that's for students who may just need accelerated math or may just need language arts or one, or, one, one subject. No, what we're finding is that many more students can work at advanced level in all subjects. Some need more time to process math, yes. It's really a change in philosophy. It went from determining who's gifted, who's not, and if you're gifted, you get the full-time center, to saying, is there evidence that this child will be successful in a level four service? Change in that philosophy and looking for evidence, not just test scores, but work samples, a gifted behavior rating scale filled out by the teacher, parent guardian questionnaires, you know, SOL scores, just looking at a portfolio, a case study, we've been able to identify many more children that can be successful at that very high level than we did when we just looked at test scores. So that, so it's a change in philosophy to like, you have to be identified gifted in order to get the service to, hey, there's evidence that you can be successful at this level, let's give them the opportunity and see how they do, and they are very, very successful.
Well, that was going to be my next question.
Yes.
And that has been borne out in, in reality then and in practice.
We have a young man right now who's graduating from Mount Vernon High School. He was a young scholar at Mount Eagle. ESOL learner, came here from Ethiopia, didn't even speak English. He said he learned at watching TV. He now is graduating as a full IB diploma candidate from Mount Vernon, got a full scholarship to Harvard, and he hopes to go on to medical school. If you looked at his test scores, he never would have been identified for anything.
Oh, that's a marvelous story.
That's one of many, but I'm just saying, that's-
But that's a great example.
It's a great example.
That is a great example.
And that's what we're talking about.
And I, I guess I'll make just one more quick comment, which, this is one aspect of access the other. In communities like mine, there's always this suspicion that, that what is happening in one level four in another part of the county is not the same thing that's happening in ours. And I do think that's something that we need to continue to explore, to make sure that whatever, whatever high-level courses are being offered in, in one part of the county needs to be, be offered and with, with integrity, you know, and with, with rigor in, in all parts. Because, for example, with the, the student that, that you used as an, as an example, it would not have done him any good to have had a curriculum that was not as rigorous as it would have been in a, in a, in another part of the county. So, I just, I make that comment. And I have a go-back from Mrs. Corbin Sanders.
Actually, we have two students that are young scholars at Mount Vernon going to Harvard on a full scholarship.
Okay.
Yes, and so it's very exciting news, and it is attributable to the great work that your programs offer. I actually have kind of a follow-up on what Mrs. Evans is mentioning about the consistency in the delivery of the services from place to place. And I know, Dr. Horn, you and I have talked about this in the past, but one of the concerns that I hear from people in the community is that, at the local level four level with the different models, you can actually see the effectiveness of the local level four by how many students actually stay at the base school versus going to the center. And I'm not sure that's, I think that's more anecdotal evidence rather than quantitative. That's why I like your longitudinal study recommendation, but is there something we should be doing to ensure the consistency in the delivery of the services from one location to another?
I just, and I'm not sure this answers your question entirely, but I, I do think it's a valid point, and one of the, our main missions in AAP is to ensure fidelity of implementation, especially in level four programs. And so, we, you know, recently, we started, we, we've been getting together, AARts have been getting together by regions and really discussing how we are working to support students. We discuss twice-exceptional students, we discuss young scholars, we discuss, you know, using instruction in new and novel ways and curriculum. So I feel, although that's not necessarily coming from higher, that we, as a group, are trying very hard to make sure that what we're doing here is, in fact, being replicated across with some consistency. And I know the AAP office has been very supportive in terms of training and professional development and trying to, to make that a reality as well. But I do think, I think, of course, it does vary from school to school. I think just personally, being a full-time AARt has a greater impact on the community and their ability to connect with you than a part-time AARt, because you are able to really be, be part of that fabric and reach out. And I know that we've been able to continue to keep our students, the majority of our students stay at our local level four instead of going to the center. It's still an option, but I do think that as a, as a group, we try very hard to make sure we're supporting our schools equitably, but there's always, you know, there's always room for, for growth and, and making sure that we're doing even a better job.
I'm actually a parent with, that, your example, I am living proof of the, we chose to have our daughter, and actually, she also made the choice, of remaining at the local level four and not going to the center. So, I'm at Buzz Aldrin, we're at Buzz Aldrin, and we have a very strong level four program, wonderful AR teacher, Ms. Lewis, and the fact of the matter is, if you looked at, we went to the center, we looked at the two, in terms of rigor and what they're offering, in terms of programs and the opportunities, I didn't see really any difference. I saw that we were going to be able to remain in our community. I mean, there's a big emotional and social aspect to raising a child and in terms of the academic, so you've got to look at them the whole person. Like having the option, but at the end of the day, we felt that because of level four, one, that the teachers were, they all have their advanced academic certification endorsement, they're constantly doing training, professional development, they have the resources, there's a great collaborative environment at that school. So I think, you know, to your point about what's going to be the same throughout, a lot of it is in the recommendations that we're talking about. It's, you know, level playing field when it comes to professional development and resources. And again- And again, having the right people on the bus. But again, it also comes down to the mindset of the principal. So again, I would look at the best practices. There's a lot of great information here and there's a lot of schools doing a lot of good things. And as you could see, it's from a grassroots effort. And there are some really good, you asked if, should we go with Masoncrest or should we go with Belvedere? You know, there's pockets and things are doing well. There's portions of it, I think that they're doing well. I don't think every model will fit, but I think there's portions that can fit at all. So I think it might behoove to do a deep dive, to survey the schools, see what's working well, and see how you might be able to get back to basics and develop a platform where all schools can, can utilize and start from and build it from the ground up again.
I also say, and at counties large as ours, consistency is always going to be a challenge. And we, we do have many, many excellent centers and local level fours. And whenever there is, whenever we hear from parents that it's not what it should be, we always contact the principal. We, and somebody from my staff goes out and works with the principal and the team of teachers, and it's been quite successful doing it that way. So, we try to be as strategic as possible, working with the schools that, that might need extra support because it's a new principal or a turnover of teachers for whatever reason. But consistency is always going to be a challenge because of our size.
And with that, I'm going to give Dr. Lockard the final word.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to reiterate what I heard everyone else say about Dr. Horn. I just want to say thank you. Your leadership has certainly made FCBS a national model in this area and has brought tremendous benefit to our students, our community. And so for that, we're, we're thankful and appreciative of your efforts. So thank you very much.
Thank you all. It has really been an honor to be part of this. I can't believe that 28 years ago, I thought I'd teach for a couple of years and then retire, then go off, and here I am. But thank you all. It's been, it's been my pleasure to work with all of you. So thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we will take a three-minute break and then go to our advisory committee for Students with Disabilities Report.